Welcome to the regular meeting of the Arlington School Committee. Today is Thursday, December 19th, 2019. Joining the committee tonight, oh, first of all, Jeff Thielman is not able to meet us on time. He may be joining us late. And joining us tonight are Juliana Keys from the AEA and Manjo Moore from Arlington High School Student Representative. Doesn't look like we have any public comment? Any public comment from the audience? No? All right. So, the first item on our agenda is actually the approval of the Pathways Academy Plan. We have Michelle Gujend, the Executive Vice President of McLean Hospital, and Laura Mead to present. Please come up to the table. And the microphone doesn't work in the room, but it works at home. This is broadcast on cable TV.
Okay.
So, just make sure, as each of you speak, you move the microphone or keep it in between you. Oh, is Karen, is the cord all the way out? The cord looks a little stuck.
Oops.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So, we haven't done this for a long time. We haven't had a new school open in Arlington for a very long time, since before I've been here. So, if you'd just want to give us a little bit of overview of what your program is, what the plan is for its Arlington operations, and we can go from there.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you very much for having us this evening. We appreciate you putting us on the agenda. Let me just give a quick overview of what McLean Services will, is the plan to be coming to Arlington, because I think that may answer some other questions you may have about the school and our other programs.
We were very fortunate to find that there would be a property like Jermaine Lawrence available to be able to help us expand our services. We, at this point, are oversubscribed, and there is way more good work to be done, and we just have run out of space. So, particularly for residential care and the school services, and their campus has been built to be able to do that, and that is a big thrill for us, because we're in 1890s buildings that were not built for what they now do, and that's always creates a challenge. So, the opportunity here is to relocate Pathways Academy, which is why we're here tonight, but also to relocate two areas of residential programs from our Three East Continuum. These are residential programs that are built around the dialectical behavioral therapy kinds of techniques, which are educationally-based socio-emotional learning curricula, classroom types of organizing, features for kids with goals, and those children will be on the campus as well. Probably a very important feature of that whole program is all of their educational needs will also be provided by the program. They will not be in the Arlington school system. So, I know that was an issue with the previous folks, because they had different programs. Our programs are all-inclusive, and we feel very strongly that the educational needs for these adolescents primarily, who will be in our care for about six to eight weeks, we will take care of their educational needs as well in one program right at the center of the Jermaine Lawrence campus. So, that will be what we'll be offering for them. And we expect this will be in the range of 30 to 40 individuals. These are not large programs, so that will be all taken care of onsite. Pathways Academy is another opportunity for us, a school that we have had on the Belmont campus quite successfully for a long time. This will finally give them their ability to have their own building and to be able to expand potentially some of their services, and certainly to be able to rearrange them in a building that will be much more hospitable for educational services. So, Laura Mead is here with me tonight. She's the Educational Administrator for Pathways, and she'll describe that program.
Thank you. So, Pathways Academy is, we're a small school, maximum of 32 students. We average about 27. We serve students age six through 22. I would say typically the youngest is about third grade in reality, and we do grow it up to 22. And we are a kind of a small community, so each classroom has four students, one special ed teacher certified, and one, what we call a school counselor, is like a teacher's assistant. And the students do the regular kind of academics, the typical core academics, the typical electives that you'd see in any school. The one thing that we add differently in terms of classes is a social pragmatics class, which the students have as like a direct core subject, and then we also infuse it in everything we do. So, the nature of the students that attend Pathways are students usually with disorders on the autism spectrum that need a lot of social skills support. And so, we teach it directly, and then all staff are supporting it at all times throughout the day. The other kind of piece we bring in is sensory integration, where we have in between every 45-minute class, a 15-minute sensory integration break. The goals for sensory integration are developed by our OTs, and all staff support the students in working. And it's kind of a time for kids, it's just break time, playtime, but for those of us working behind the scenes and the students that are getting to know their own needs and what they're working on, it's what they need to do to get ready for the next class to kind of sustain them throughout the day. So, we have, in general, the population is for the most part college-bound, but it's not going to be a typical, you know, leave high school at 18 and head off to a four-year. We have a lot of dual enrollment when we have older students who might be at Pathways for an extra year after 12th grade. They might take a community college class, couple days a week, Pathways another, and that's a great way for us to help them transition into the world of higher ed.
Great. Are there any other, any questions from the committee?
Just a clarification. So, about 30 in each program, does that sound right? So, is that, it sounded like you said 32 is your limit, and 30 is yours?
Approximately.
Right.
Yes, for the two residential programs.
Okay. And is the space then equally divided, or is there, there's greater need in one of the programs than the other?
So, the way that we are envisioning, it would be that Pathways will have their own building.
Mm-hmm.
That will be the only programming that will be in their dedicated building. And that was selected because of the larger areas that could be made into classrooms, because a lot of the space is already more sort of dormitory-focused in a way.
Mm-hmm.
So, we'll use the, we'll have a boys' program and a girls' program, and they'll be in two separate buildings, and then there'll be another building where some of the other programming, where people will come together and office space will be. So, it'll be pretty spread out, but within the confines of the Jermaine Lawrence campus there.
Yes, Ms. Taylor?
Did I understand right? You have two programs, a day program and a residential program? Or did I misunderstand?
The school, the school is a day program.
Is a day program?
Yep.
And have you started the residential part of it?
Not yet, no.
So, that's coming?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I just want to clarify, Pathways isn't going residential?
I understand that.
Okay.
I understand. I went to one of the community meetings, and I was wondering, you clarified it. Thank you.
Yes, I think when we had the community meeting, we weren't sure exactly which of the residential programs, how this was all going to work out at this point.
Correct.
I think we've got a pretty clear sense of what will work well in those, in those buildings and be able to have the appropriate mixing and separation for the folks.
If I could just clarify.
Sure.
Tonight, are we approving both programs or just the Pathways program tonight and then coming back for the residential program later? I don't know. I'm asking.
I believe there are questions for Pathways.
For the school.
Yeah, for the school.
For the approval of the school.
To the extent there's educational component of the residential program that's not provided by Pathways, then you'll have to figure out whether you need to come back to us for that or not, but that's, right? That would be separate.
Okay. In general, that's handled through the program, and we've been handling within the hospital services, because the length of stay is so short.
It's like a hospitalization.
You use tutor, you use a vendor for tutoring. So, when we have students placed in a hospital setting or something like that, most of the hospitals have vendors in which we pay directly.
That's not our purview.
Yeah. That would be, okay.
Thank you.
Clarify that. Dr. Asanmp, you're next.
Yeah. So, as Mr. Carden said, we haven't done this in decades. So, my questions aren't implying anything about your program. It's just, I think, we're tasked with evaluating and approving it, so that's what I'm trying to do. One question, in your program description, it says, "Most students at Pathways Academy have had negative experiences in programs with strict ABA philosophies and benefit from our system of social pragmatic learning and natural consequences." And I was wondering if you could discuss that a little bit more, because I don't understand, you know, nowhere else do you explain what the natural consequences are, what's happening with the students.
Sure. We find that, and as I think all educators find, ABA is a wonderful tool for so many students, especially students on the spectrum. But there seems to be kind of a subset of kids that are dealing with so much anxiety that aren't able to do better just in order to earn something, that they're actually already doing the best they can, and that when they're in a structure where if they don't earn a certain amount of points, they then don't get a certain kind of reward or something similar like that, and I realize it's a kind of a strict ABA interpretation, we find that they will say, "Well, why try at all?" And just shut down. Or maybe it's not a thinking process, it's just a shutting down. So, we use a natural consequences pragmatics approach, where everything is a learning opportunity. So, literally, if a student comes into class, swipes everything off the table, we look at that as staff, and we think, "What do we need to do differently?" It's not about the student adhering to our expectations in the moment. It is, what's their behavior telling us, and what can we do to help them be in a place where they feel a little safer? And then when they're calm, we can say, and it might be, "Let's go for a break," or, "Do you need a break?" "Let's go shoot some baskets." All sorts of different strategies that we can do because of our small ratio and our small school size. When they're calmer, we can say, "You know, I could tell you were pretty upset when you, you know, swiped everything off the desk. What's another way you can let me know that you were really tired and you weren't right?" You know, if we find out that they were tired, what's another way you can let us know? Our goal is to have kids use words and be able to ask for a break whenever they need it. And a lot of people will say, "Well, if kids can ask for breaks, aren't they just taking breaks all day, like the whole day is a break?" But we actually don't find that. A lot of times, transitioning from programs that weren't successful, where they didn't experience success, it takes a little while to trust that if they ask for a break, they really can get it. So, there is still some acting out, but we see the acting out go way down, because we're really able to just pull back our demands when the students are struggling. So, we call it a social pragmatics approach, because it's, it's always kind of relationship-building, conversational, "What's another way you can let me know using words," which are more socially expected when you're having a hard time.
I think what I was coming, it sounds like what you mean by natural consequences is not what I've heard of in parenting as natural consequences, where, you know, if your student, I mean, if your child says, "Well, I'm not going to study," then the natural consequences are you fail the test or something, and that's, I was concerned about that. Then the other question, I had two other questions. One is, in terms of the social learning, it sound, the curriculum that you gave sounded excellent. I just wondered, it seemed like each week or month, there was a new topic, and they were, never came back again. You know, it's like bing, 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 and it just seems like, especially from the students that you're describing, that wouldn't they benefit from coming back and revisiting the same topics?
Right. For the most part, the social pragmatic goals and objectives in the students' IEPs are the main ones they need to work on, so those we're always coming back to. It might not be part of the, literally, the class lesson, but kind of what they're working on, what staff are working on with the students all the time. We do hit the same themes every single year. So, we have a lot of kids that say, "I don't need to learn about conversation, we already did this," but they actually do, and so we have to change it up and make it interesting. But it is, over time, they do keep kind of coming back. And can I say real quick about the natural consequences? I actually forgot to mention that it's a, it plays a big role in terms of the social skills. If we have a student that acts out, and we might have to ask other students to leave the room if we can't move the student, because we go to great lengths to not put hands on, as all of you do as well here. And we're really trying to say like, "Well, you know, John might not want to spend break with you, because you told him I hate you." And so, helping them see the natural social consequences. Or, "We're going to spend time, you're going to work with a teacher away from the group, because the group didn't feel safe when you threw your chair." So, that kind of thing.
And then my final question is just, if, as a day school, how are your students getting to and from the school?
They're transported by the district, so we have a lot of little minivans with the school bus tag on it.
Thank you.
May I just come in?
Okay. I'm just trying to understand the structure. So, essentially, what you're doing is running two programs, one of which is residential and one of is a day program, serving similar population.
I would say the populations are similar. I would say that some of the techniques that get used actually probably are similar, but with different kids, slightly different age group, and different expectations of what the goals are going to be for how they're going to be helped.
Well, granted, the kids in a residential program have a higher level of need, but you're working within sort of a similar domain.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah.
Yeah. I think the other thing is, is because our behavioral health approach to things, you know, I think a lot of these things, we're describing them as fairly siloed in what they are, and people have a variety of interventions that are possible, and we're fortunate that we have professionals. And one of the things we often see is that the programs work together, and that we have a depth of ability to work with people with obsessive-compulsive disorder, or that kind of very specific need that has a very specific intervention with it, can often be very usefully deployed in a, in a place where they're, they can work with the faculty as well as the other clinicians that are there.
Now, the residential students are going to be members of our community. What is the advice you would have for us as members of the community as well when we meet our neighbors?
So, a good question. I think that these people who are in a residential setting like this, these individuals choose to be there. There is no one there, because they've been placed there or committed there, anything like that. They are there, because they want to engage in a pretty rigorous form of, of treatment and educational and skill-building and all of that. So, they are very much just like any other individual who's made a commitment to try to improve their, their skillsets, their behaviors, and these are individuals, adolescents, young adults, who have found that basically they've got pretty much normal intellectual functioning, all of that. It's just that their socio-emotional development, or their impulsivity, or their inability to sort of keep, keep their lives in an organized progression, has been, come to a point where they really want to dig in and do something about it. And that's what these programs are all about. They're very immersive, they are very well-staffed with professionals and educators and people to really work with them. And those high staffing ratios, and we have them through day and evening and night coverage as well, everything is fully staffed for us, with a wake staff, to be able to really use the time wisely and to benefit for them.
I really see being a welcoming community be an important part of the supports that will enable your students to progress, which is why I'm really interested in our role as, in Arlington, to be partners with you in your work, because these are our kids too. Even if they don't originate in Arlington, they're now our neighbors and people we have to care about.
Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Taylor?
I just want to add, the, these folks had a open forum, a meeting at the Park Ave Community Church for the neighbors, the prospective neighbors at the time, and I'm happy to say that the vast majority of the people were very, there were a lot of concerns brought forward that night, and I thought they did an excellent job in responding to them, and the feeling that I got was the community was very responsive in a positive way in having this program brought there.
Thank you.
All right. Dr. Bodie?
Adding to that, we met about a week ago, and you met with myself, Dr. McNeil, Ms. Elmer, and our Director of Science, Sam Hoyo, who's here tonight as well. And we talked for about an hour, and we were very impressed with their programming. And in fact, there was a lot of questioning about the specific science lessons that were going to be offered to students. And one of, one of the things that we have all agreed is, to the extent that we can share professional development or share resources, we are certainly going to, to try to have that kind of partnership as we go forward. So, from the four of us who met with them, we would recommend the approval of this program.
All right. So, I don't have the state law open, but under the state law and under our policy, you know, we are delegated the responsibility to review the program and make sure the curriculum is adequate. I forget the exact language. I think, if it ever comes up again, we may want to have a subcommittee, I think, because we have the timing issue here, but we may want to have a subcommittee, be more clearly delegate to the superintendent to do what she actually did in this case. So, fortunately, she did do it, and, and did, because we're not really qualified to review the curriculum. So, can I get a motion to?
So, move.
The program?
Second.
All those, any discussion?
Just one quick question.
Sure.
When you use the word district, are you referring to your district or to the Arlington School District?
For the Bussing.
For the Bussing. The sending school districts.
The sending school, thank you. I'm just covering the money part.
All right. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Any opposed or abstentions? Great, it's unanimous. Thank you very much for coming before us.
Thank you very much.
I'll come, thank you.
Welcome to Arlington.
Yes.
All right. So, next up is the elementary budget presentation. Welcome to the principals.
Yeah, we have all seven principals here, as well as some of our directors. They'll come up and they'll introduce themselves. We have as Director Sarah Byrd, who, we're here at the last, Susan Bisson for literacy, for digital literacy, and Sam Hoyo for science.
Dr. Michael Hannah, I'm Principal of Stratton Elementary, and all seven elementary principals are here tonight, but I was elected to give a brief summary of the budget priorities document that you've been presented with. And I just wanted to thank Dr. Bodie and Dr. McNeil for giving us such ample time and space to talk as a collegial group about budget priorities, both talking to us from district perspective, and then really listening and cultivating our conversation from a school level as well. So, thank you to both of them and their leadership. And thanks to the school committee for the opportunity to have this conversation about our schools. We are grateful, deeply grateful, for the continued support of our work, as well as the opportunity to provide leadership in a district that values a very high-quality educational experience for children. From all that we've experienced in Arlington, and that comes from a, many years of being principals here in Arlington, this fact has been unwavering. We'd like to open this year with a short expression of appreciation for the financial support of our initiatives from last year, both to the school committee and to the town of Arlington. We have a story to tell, and it begins in FY '20, in the first year of this multi-year plan, when school funding was provided for many things, and we'd like to highlight these three particular areas that we found especially important to our work already this year. This is increased staffing for specialist faculty, so faculty in art, music, physical education, and library. Additional staffing for assistant principals in the schools, and then additional instructional coaches to support curriculum and instruction. So, first, the increase in specialist staffing has had two significant impacts for student achievement. First, students have accessed and become more proficient in the four traditional specialist programming areas of physical education, music, visual art, and library, media. Second, grade-level teams, including special educators, now have weekly progress monitoring and instructional design time for all the students in a given grade. The addition, secondly, the, the addition of assistant principals to the school-based administrative team has had a deep impact on the programming for students, both directly, since individual students and environments can now be much more supported with an additional administrator, but also indirectly, because now the principal has the opportunity to give the school consistent instructional leadership, and not simply act as a sort of reactive backstop to the twists and turns of typical busy days in schools. So, the professional culture in schools has improved significantly because of this investment. And then finally, instructional coaches are responsible, in our view, for the most direct, immediate, and effective impact on instructional improvement. The opportunity to have collegial feedback and challenge in practice from a trusted colleague is aligned with what we know to be the most effective approaches to instructional improvement that we know of. So, this year, the elementary principal team continues to approach budget requests with a multiple-year view. So, rather look at FY '21 in isolation. We once again considered the district priorities, requests from our faculty, our leadership emphases, funding commitments from last year that were able to be provided, and the resources that we have and need to, and need to support students and teachers in demonstrating success and high achievement. So, the staffing model that you have in the table in front of you, we're presenting, considers the day-to-day experience of our students and teachers, and also the district priorities that we are supporting as an administrative team. But of highest priority on the list are equity among all schools as it relates to literacy, instructional support, and then the addition of, the hiring of additional assistant principals. We believe the overall needs of our schools are also continuing to grow as enrollment increases. So, what will be important to continue to consider are the need for increased administrative support due to continued student growth and daily building demands, including building safety and maintaining the efficacy of our supervision and evaluation system. So, with increased student enrollment, of course, comes increased staffing, which comes increased supervisory responsibilities. Also, aligned, high-quality instruction that supports significant and ongoing curriculum reform and improvement. And finally, continued focus on safe and supportive schools, which includes a continued development of socio-emotional learning programming and an improvement of practice centered on cultural proficiency. So, we believe that the items listed are the most immediate need in terms of staffing requests to do all of these district priorities and meet district goals. We continue to support the multi-year plan in the ways it addresses other areas, such as materials, and obviously, professional development and learning. Some additional programming requests that would strengthen curriculum and instruction, which were also, of which we're also supportive, is an additional ELL faculty, an additional library-media specialist, digital learning specialist, social studies instructional coach, along with a science instructional coach, another, and another literacy-math instructional coach. As mentioned before, this seems, from the research, to have some of the most profound impact on instructional improvement. Finally, also a physical therapy assistant and a half-time team chair at the elementary level. One last request is to highlight the continued need for a review of staffing at the classroom level and within our special education department. These line items are in the multi-year plan, and we ask for your continued support in maintaining low and equitable numbers across our schools. Again, thank you very much for this time. We'd love to take some time to, in the conversation, to answer questions and also speak about the experiences in our schools that may underscore the importance of each of these staffing requests.
Great. Thank you very much. Is anyone who would like to start with questions? I can start for a change if, all right, I'll start. So, one thing to note is that your enrollment this year is only up by 30 students over last year, yet we added three sections, or four. Do we add four or three? Three or four classrooms for only 30, net 30 increase, because of the way things fell. But I just want, you know, I would expect that to continue to, the increase to be in the 30 to 40 range, and then to start to trail off as your classes of 500 move up, because the class of 590 looks like it's going to be an aberration, and will probably settle in the 530s to 540s. So, as you're looking at staffing next year, I do think you need to take a more serious look at making sure there's some equity across schools. So, in some places, we have 70 students, we have four sections. At another school, we only have three sections. We probably need to flip those to three sections, even though the four sections is a nice to have, simply because the enrollment growth is not going to justify adding enough teachers to keep that small level, if we want to do some of this other stuff. So, just something to think about as you're actually planning each individual building. My other question was about the assistant principals. What specifically, where would these 2.0 FTE be added? What's, what's left? I think, so, Thompson is actually in the budget this year, but you didn't hire. So, is that included again? Or what's, what is the 2.0?
Well, yes, I didn't hire this year yet for an assistant principal. Well, yes, I didn't hire this year yet for an assistant principal. The part-time didn't draw a lot of candidates, and my colleagues, I think, you know, got some great candidates from that small pool. So, yes, I also think that at some point, given that I'm a school of over 500 at this point, there's no halftime evaluations, there's no halftime issues, and I also know that my colleagues are feeling that, and you guys can speak for this yourselves, having additional time with their assistant principal, maybe making it more consistent, upping a bit here at one school or another, so that you can get three days instead of two or two and a half. So the positions are not necessarily just geared towards one particular place, or only one person at one place. I don't know.
We really do believe that the schools should all be building towards a full-time assistant principal. We know that that's not something that can happen all at once, that it is something that we need to do through the multi-year plan. So in that to ask for those two FTEs, we would be requesting full-time at Thompson, and then building to full-time at Dallin and at Bishop. Stratton has a full-time assistant principal, Hardy has a half-time assistant principal and a half-time team chair. And while sometimes that does present other kinds of challenges, it is a full-time, very capable person who works very hard, so that's something that we could look at down the road, and then also, you know, in other schools as well.
Okay, thanks. So in the five-year plan, we had only budgeted, only planned for half a principal at each school, so going to full-time, and I understand things change, we're not wedded to the five-year plan, but that would, that would take something away that we were actually, we don't even have enough money to cover everything that was in the plan, right? So I think as you're prioritizing, what is it that you want to take away? I mean, it sounds like you're deferring digital learning specialists, so is, are you saying these assistant principals are more important than adding a digital learning specialist to each building?
Well, I think what we're saying is that, do you want to answer? Go ahead.
I think that's a fair question, right? To, I think we would need to really spend some time to prioritize, I mean, there's quite a few requests that are laid out over that five years, to really prioritize what that would be. I think would be a collaborative conversation between us, some of our curriculum directors, Rod and Kathy. And is there, why were you thinking, why did that position come to mind first?
So, yeah, because it's not in the, it's not in the priority list now, right? So it's, the digital learning specialist is down in the, here are some additional things.
With coaches.
Right, with the coaches. So.
So you see, you see, I do think it's a fair question of the additional staffing requests or positions that we recognize are important for our schools, where would we prioritize assistant principals on top of some of those?
Yeah.
I think that would be a conversation we'd want to have with directors and Rod and Kathy.
Sure, go ahead.
What you're hearing tonight and the previous meeting was, what are the things that emerge that, from the second year of the plan? I want to remind you that the second year of the plan had over $2 million worth of asks, so there's always a prioritization and some things move forward. And as we have in past years, we will look at all of these things and have to prioritize. And they're tough decisions, they really are, because they're all things that we think that are important, and we will go through this process together when we bring the budget to you. I personally think we should have more than 2.0 in the FTEs for assistant principal. I think that the impact has been very positive, and as we increase the number of demands, I just, there's just, things just always creep up in terms of more demands and more demands, I think that it's something that's important for schools. So this will be the work of January, and it's helpful to hear your feedback and some, your comments, I think, are very helpful in terms of thinking about this. But we will have to do that, because our number, the amount of money that we will have incrementally to, you know, to put into positions will be limited.
Yeah, I was focusing on it because it is a change from what's in the five-year plan, so it's significant.
It is.
All right, other questions? Go ahead, Ms. Morgan.
So I was, I, you know, as I said to the middle school and high school schools when they were here, only a week ago, it seems like a lot longer, I didn't expect that we were going to sort of take the five-year plan and say, here's the FY '21 column, okay, good, check, check, great, have a good night, you know, and be gone in five minutes. So, but I think what's interesting for us is to reconcile between the two, and the piece that is, there's a pretty significant investment in FY '21, in the SLC programs and in expanding inclusion programming, so there were pretty big asks for that, and this might be a question for Ms. Elmer as well, which is fine. I don't see that fully reflected in this ask, I see the 1.0 special education learning specialist, but I don't see, you know, it looks like there was a pretty, like, there was, you know, about 180,000 in the five-year plan that looks like for inclusion, and then increased staffing in the SLC classrooms at the elementary level, and I'm kind of curious where that went. And to Dr. Bodie's point, I understand that, like, we're not, you know, we're working through that, but I'd like to know why we're not, why we don't.
That was only three, that's three positions, so they're asking for one of them.
Three to one is kind of a big change, a lot fewer people.
When we look at the amount of money that we have available and all the priorities you've heard from everybody, we kind of make some tough decisions.
So in the narrative, what you emphasized was assistant principal and literacy. So I want to know, so literacy I assume is the 2.0 or 2.1 reading staff, right? So were the 2.1 available, what would that look like at each school? What kind of reading staff would you have?
Actually, we're all looking at each other because there is a breakout of that. We had thought that that was in the, the link was in your document, but if not, we can provide that as far as, like, breakout.
Oh, at each school?
Yeah.
I'm getting some from the, from the teacher's document, but I, I'm sort of having to read between lines, and yeah, I don't see that, so that'd be helpful.
Okay, yeah, we'll provide that.
And I think the piece of looking at the structure of the reading program is something that we all like to do across the board for a lot of the different areas in which we work, which is trying to, you know, come to a place where we're looking at it, that support being more equitably distributed, and that we have a process and a way of doing that, so that we are seeing that over years, we can build on that process and make sure that we're giving the same, well, not exactly the same, but, you know, supporting resources between our different schools that are equitable.
And if I could say more generally, you know, there's a, there's a real sort of shift in, in our thinking about the role of the learning, the reading specialists and the general education teacher, through the leadership of the superintendent and assistant superintendent this year, we have really had a supported emphasis on the practice of the general educator supporting that, and how they can do what they need to do to engage more brain-based reading instruction that's really getting traction. And so our reading specialist task won't be simply to have more people to pull children out of classrooms to do reading instruction, but also to be, in a way, instructional coaches to our general educators and how to do things in a tier-one framework. So we're really excited by the prospect and just the momentum we've already gotten in this way, under this movement, yeah.
And then just one more. I know Matt Coleman's not here, but I know in the past, he's often advocated for equity between literacy and reading and mathematics as being sort of complementary skills, and I know it's also a particularly weak point in several of our MCAS for our low, low income in some other categories. And so if we boost the reading, do we sort of leave math behind? Or are we in a good place with math?
One of the things that's been really positive is, remember now we're staffed with a full-time coach, mathematics coach in all of our buildings, so that's still relatively new.
Not full-time, but that each of the buildings has.
Each of the building has a dedicated, yeah, math coach. And we're, we've just finished up three years of pretty intensive curriculum rollout with professional development, so I think the emphasis for the past few years has really heavily been on mathematics, and the, having a dedicated staff member to continue that work of professional learning in the math coach really has set us up to be in a pretty good place, particularly, you know, and we'll continue to follow our achievement scores to see if that's reflected there as well. I think early literacy and the work that we're doing with early literacy, particularly around how we're using assessments and how we're watching students' early reading skills unfold over the first few years of learning, we're recognizing that the need for, you know, reading specialists right now and having some equity in their caseloads too, and with the amount of students that we have, is important for us to address. And there, I think the reason why it's hard for us to just spit out exactly what the 2.1 looks like, I think for some of us, it looks like a .3, there's, we're trying to ensure that we have flexibility in our buildings so that students aren't missing reading instruction in their classrooms, and so that those few people can do work across six grades, you know, for the students in our school.
And I think there's a big part of what we're thinking about with the reading teachers that connects back to what we were talking about with our specialists and that big ask last year. So we've, we, if we can get more people dedicated within our individual buildings and not having to travel, not having to have schedules that, you know, so that will help them to be more part of that programming that we're developing. So we just had this incredible experience that we have these dedicated people in our buildings, we've totally turned the schedule into something completely different that is having this incredibly positive impact, and now we have all this dedicated common planning time and data team meeting time, and all of these people who are really focusing in, and the goals within those meetings are often, to go back to your question, mathematical and basis, right? And so, as well as the literacy piece. But when we do have, you know, to make these decisions, and I think we're very, very much aware of how we have to make decisions, it's all very important, right? But that we really are focusing in on that reading piece as being the place that we need to put those time, the resources, the money.
So I just have a follow-up on the math intervention piece. So talking with a parent, they're apparently, and something that Mr. Coleman has said, unfortunately not here, but there is apparently a math intervention model at the Title I schools that's not available at the other schools. Can you talk about that, and also in the context of equity? You know, I talked to a parent who was not at a Title I school and was unable to access that program. Describe what that program is and.
Yeah, yeah, I can speak to that. So Stratton School's a Title I school that benefits from a full-time math instructional interventionist. They are a part of all of those general education, weekly progress monitoring meetings, when the focus is mathematics, obviously. And at those meetings, we're now able to design very targeted, together, instructional supports that Mr. Deck then is dispatched to do. So it's very planful, it's very focused on very specific students with very specific achievement goals. And so that that is a rich opportunity is definitely the case. We, you know, this is, you know, some inequity loaded into the nature of Title I, and having targeted schools that aren't all seven elementary schools, and that's the case in Arlington as it is in every district in the country. And so to try to, you know, match that through other funding sources is certainly, yeah, laudable, and I have to confess that I haven't acquainted myself with, with how that is imitated or looks and sounds in other schools. But I think that when we're, when we're weighing it, it's not just because it's a district priority to be focusing on literacy instructional improvement, but because of the discreet and really highly-trained instructional intervention frameworks that are part of reading instruction, whether you want to be certified in Orton-Gillingham or in Wilson, I mean, these are, they require just a level of instructional support that's tied to brain-based assessments that, as yet, you know, we don't have that kind of discreet instructional support in math instruction, and maybe as, as our children get smarter, they'll be able to do just that. But that's why I think we have this, this emphasis on getting a group of people who are trained in those discrete reading areas to be in the buildings.
Okay, and the one instructionalist that is in the list would be split at other schools, math, sorry, math interventionist that is in the list would be split between the other, the non-Title I schools, or what, do you know what that role would be?
Feasting on that Title I grant, I'm not sure how we, how we support you on that one one split up, do you remember?
It hasn't been determined yet.
But it would be generally to spread this model.
Trying to get, again, it's incremental staffing each year. In the five-year plan, if you remember, and they, sort of talking about literacy and mathematics, the goal was to have a literacy coach, and of course, more than one sometimes, reading teacher in a building, but then also a math coach and a math interventionist. And so as we're doing with lots of things, we're trying to build that, but you can't do it all at once. And that's, we recognize that too. One of the things we also have in the schools, which are math practice guides, this was a program started, I don't know, what was it, 10 years ago, quite a while ago, nine, in which we have people who are trained to come in and support the early grades, and it's a, it's a form of math intervention. They're paid on a different rate, tutoring rate. So there are ways that we've been doing it to try to accomplish it in a little bit less expensive way, but these, I have to say, the people we have doing it are excellent, and in fact, some of them have actually gone into other positions. So like many of these things, I think in, it'll, it'll still be, we're still figuring out exactly where it will go.
Ms. Morgan?
Just a follow-up about the reading intervention. We heard last week and have been being updated a lot about what we're doing in the early grades and kindergarten and first grade with different kinds of assessments, which is really exciting, it's a big part of the superintendent's instructional goals for this year, which is, is great. And so I guess my, what I'm curious is, is do you, do you see the need for more reading support and reading specialists as a result of these changes, or, or not yet, or, you know, because what I guess my, what I'm wondering is, is, you know, we're sort of in this, like, nascent stage with some really, you know, exciting, interesting evaluation of our very earliest readers, and so I'm, I'm wondering, you know, are we going to come back next year and say, oh my gosh, we actually need, like, you know, we, we are identifying so many more kids that we need so much more reading support? Or, so I guess how is that ask going sort of hand-in-hand with what we're doing in the earliest grades, if anybody could speak to that?
Yeah, and I think that's what we're all, we're all thinking about too. The investment right now in reading specialists is important because of that very point. Everybody's learning something new about early literacy instruction, and our reading specialists have had this, you know, experience for, you know, some of them for 10-plus.
Almost.
Approaches for how do we grow phonemic awareness, phonics, and other skills with our students. If we got to a point where all of a sudden we saw even more and more students, I think what we'd want to put our money on is professional development and professional learning for our staff, because really what we want is our students to be receiving what they need in their classrooms as much as possible. So I think we should keep that conversation iterative, let's come back to it, but right now, I think what's important is that we have adequate intervention staff to meet the needs of our earliest readers and provide support for our classroom teachers who are really interested in learning more about reading instruction and trying to provide students what they need. That's a good point, though.
It is, and it's something we've talked about a lot. It's that what do we need right this minute, and then what do we need to help support us in that vision going forward? Because it is, it's true, what we're talking about is that the classroom teacher What we're talking about is that the classroom teachers are the ones who need to be able to do this work primarily. But it's an interesting thing, the way classroom teachers are trained and the way reading specialists are trained. You know, I was trained as a reading specialist, but that was such a long time ago that we didn't talk about any of this stuff. And now the way people are coming into this as reading specialists, they have this kind of experience in the work that they're doing. But a general educator does not have that. That's not part of our teacher preparation programs. And the teachers are eating it up, they love it. But it's going to take some time to get to that point where people are feeling really comfortable and confident with the work that they're doing. Because we want everyone to be present in that environment of their classroom, getting what they need. So it's a long and a short term kind of.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you all for coming, we appreciate you all being here.
So just to emphasize that we should get that document, the extra document that they said was attached that we didn't get. They said there's another, there's a link to additional document, just to make sure that we get that.
And now we have the AEA presenting on their view of elementary needs. Ms. Nolan is going to present, right? Thank you for coming tonight.
On behalf of the AEA, I really appreciate you having me. So I just want to preface before I share that we know that there's a lot of, there's a huge monetary impact in terms of what we're asking for. But when we go to our membership and we ask what the priorities are, right now there's two kind of big overwhelming overarching themes. It has to do a lot with support staff and looking at the number of students in small group as well as whole group settings. So when we look at monotony preschool, we just, there's a return of a seventh preschool class. And at this point in time, with that increase in class size, comes the need for an additional behaviorist and an additional speech-language pathologist. At the Bishop and at Dallin, we are asking for additional teachers of English language learners, looking at our goal of cultural competency as well as just looking at different ways of instructing students with these types of needs. So looking at potential opportunities to push into classrooms as well as to pull out. Looking at parity across the district, looking at a full-time learning specialist to be added to the peer school. Right now, that is the only building at the elementary level that has only two learning specialists, we're looking for three. There's a real need across the district right now for additional support when it comes to occupational therapy. The caseload demands have increased district-wide. In order to meet those demands, we will need an additional 1.0 FDE occupational therapist at least. Class sizes are a real concern with teachers right now. There are a lot of demands in the classroom in terms of student learning needs. And so with increases in student class sizes, teachers are finding themselves more and more extended, sorry. So teachers are really advocating for teaching assistants to support in the classroom in grades one and two with 22 or more students and in grades three to five with 24 or more students. And just looking at the general needs of students across the curriculum when it comes to just having more chairs and more students in the room. Additional team chairs at the elementary level. Compliance is a real issue. We know that our last CPR, there were some issues with compliance and looking at ensuring that each building has a full-time person who can make sure that compliance happens with the paperwork and with the meetings. Looking at increasing BCBA support in the district. We have a lot of students with social, emotional, and behavioral needs. And right now, we have three BCBAs district-wide that are doing the work of many. And so looking at increasing that support so that students can have behavioral plans that respond to the challenges that they have in the classroom setting. Our teachers are reporting that they are having challenges with the Great Body Shop curriculum in terms of the, the materials that they have available to them, that they're not updated at this point in time and that updated materials are necessary for them. We're asking for an increase in terms of the social work, in terms of social workers. We're finding that students are having more and more social, emotional needs that they're bringing to the classroom and that responding to those needs warrants more staff who are able to not only respond to crises but also to provide direct intervention as part of a scheduled service. We're looking for an increase in the amount of learning specialists district-wide. We are trying to be a lot more creative in the way that we provide services to students, both in small group settings as well as in whole group contexts. And so the idea being that if we can increase learning specialists, we can have a lot more creativity and collaboration happening between teachers when it comes to responding to student needs. Similar to the request when it came to the elementary principals, we're looking for an increase in reading specialists. So yes, the goal is always to have students get what they need in the general education classroom setting, but there's also a recognition that with, with Baker's passage of, you know, dyslexia screenings is going to be a real thing for students in younger grades, that our RTI, our Response to Intervention Resources right now are not adequate to respond to those needs. And there also is a recognition that right now, reading teachers are also servicing students on IEPs at times. And so if we want to be able to really capture and catch those kids who are at risk early on and do those interventions, we're going to need more people to help support that. And then the last piece has to do with projectors. It may sound silly, but there are teachers who are actually having to move projectors in and out of rooms. It's not super feasible to always have to leave your room to go get a projector. The other piece is that there are safety concerns when it comes to cords hanging around the, the rooms. So teachers have asked that if it would be possible to actually have them mounted in the rooms so they can actually project what they need onto a wall without having to leave the room or to have cords kind of dangling around everywhere. So that's our ask for this evening. I know I went through that really quickly, but I don't know if there's questions or concerns.
Great, thank you. Questions?
Have we seen the technology plan yet? Did I miss that? No, yes, I'm just wondering about the projectors and if they're in the tech plan or not or, sorry.
We have done some upgrades of projectors throughout the district. Actually, not this past summer, but the summer before last. We went through each one of the schools at the elementary level and replaced all projectors with new ones that had HDMI cable. And so, I mean, there's always going to be work to do with that. And so we have presented our, we did present our technology plan last year for the three years. So I could, I can make that available for you.
No, no, I can go back and, you, we did it here, right?
Yes, we did, yep.
I can research that.
Sure, but we're always like, you know, we, we meet regularly with the union. They have a, in a technology meeting. So we do, we are aware of the various needs that Marion is talking about.
Thank you.
I think there's just a concern too that some of the newer technology that we're getting isn't necessarily able to connect with and be fitted with old infrastructure. And so looking at, for example, when we went to Google Chromebooks, you know, if you have Apple infrastructure, they don't work together, right? So looking at how can we take what already exists and make sure that any new ads also allow us to, to teach in a way that's effective? You know, and Julie just kind of whispered a, a point to me also is that not only are we asking for classroom settings, but also for the small group contexts. A lot of those, you know, smaller interventionist classrooms are the ones that are forgotten a lot of times when it comes to various needs, whether it even just comes to space needs in general. We think about class sizes, oftentimes we don't necessarily think about, you know, when these kids leave a room to go to a small group setting, are there actually spaces for them to do that and effectively? And then also looking at, you know, access to projectors and technology in those spaces as well.
Oh, I just have a question. The Great Body Shop, I thought was entirely taken off the teachers' plates, is that not true?
Classroom teachers to gym teachers.
Yeah, no, it just says it, the upper grades, what?
It's the materials, and in fact, we've ordered them.
This one seems to indicate that classroom teachers in grade four and five continue to teach it. I, I thought it was completely changed. Is that not true?
It's been doing PE teachers, the nurses doing some of that.
The nurses are doing some of that, but are classroom teachers doing it in fourth and fifth grade?
So that's, that's during the team time? So the team time at K through three, they have the extra specials. But in grades four and five, that, that's where we discussed they're going to have the chorus and they have the digital literacy. So the teachers are still teaching part of the.
Teachers still teaching part of the.
The units have been taken off. We recognize that we need the materials and in fact.
No, no, the question was, who's teaching it in fourth and fifth? Neil says that it is classroom teachers.
Classroom teachers, yes.
That was the question, okay.
Grade K through three, it was, it's been taken off entirely.
Right, no, I get it, okay. So this is accurate, it's just different than what I'd heard, so I just wanted to verify that, okay.
Can you tell me a little bit more about how a BCBA interacts with a classroom teacher and a BSP in your building?
Sure, so a BCBA typically would be thought of as a tier-three intervention, right? So students who have considerable behavioral, social, emotional needs that begone, go beyond the needs of, or beyond the capacity of a tier-one or a tier-two. So typically speaking, the BCBA would oversee, as part of their consultation duties, a BSP who's working closely with a general education teacher to collect data on students in order to create plans. And so there's two kind of elements to our asks when it comes to the behavior piece. And I know that Julie had presented last week. One concern we have is that BSPs right now don't have generally considerably more training than a teaching assistant when it comes to the behavioral intervention piece. And so we want to make sure that those people who are on the ground are really well-equipped to work with students. But the BCBA's role tends to be mostly in terms of data collection through assessment, behavioral observations, and then working in consultation and concert with general educators, special educators, the BSPs, and school counselors. So when you see the BCBAs, they typically, when it comes to an IEP grid, will be indicated in the A section, which is consultation. And so they are stretched thin in terms of having to, you know, run between buildings. If there's a crisis, they're not somebody who can immediately be there to respond. And the idea being that if we really want to have meaningful data collection processes district-wide that then result in meaningful behavioral interventions, we need to have the oversight and then also the training. So the oversight from the BCBAs and then the training when it comes to the BSPs who are then able to actually implement it with teacher support. Does that answer your question?
All right, are there any other questions? All right, thank you very much for presenting. Okay, so the next item is the calendar. And we wanted to approve the grade one through 12 start date of September 8th. Karen, we want to approve the grade one through 12 start date of September 8th. The February vacation starting the week of Monday, February.
15th.
2021. And April vacation, Monday, April 19th, 2021.
On this calendar, there's also two or, I think two, maybe more, non-school days. They're dealing with something else that's going on. So I was wondering, since that was not mentioned in what you just stated in the motion, should we take note of that and we're not approving those days at this time?
Correct, we're only approving the start date and the two vacations.
The reason I mention it, they're printed on the document that we received in Novus, that's all, I just want to make it clear.
We're not approving the document, right?
Right, thank you.
The document is not relevant to the motion.
Thank you.
It just, it just provides the dates that we want for the motion.
Thank you.
Should we not also approve the kindergarten start date?
Sure, we can. It's a little bit more complicated because that's just the open house date.
But, but just for families, our expectation is, it's, as is written here, where it's open house date on September 8th, the ninth half of the class goes all day, 10th, the other half goes all day, and then the 11th, they all show up.
All right, so does anybody want to put together a motion that says all that?
Okay. I move to approve the start dates for grades one through 12 and kindergarten as listed on the document that we were supplied with in Novus. Additionally, we're approving the February vacation date and the April vacation dates also is listed on these documents.
Second.
All right, any further discussion?
Yeah, I, I'm certainly going to vote to approve this. This makes a lot of sense. I know there's a committee talking about calendars. I am not inclined to make any approval of any further changes of the structure within the calendar until all factors of the calendar are considered, including starting before Labor Day. I do not want to mess with the holidays till we look at everything, I'm not going to do this piecemeal. So I just wanted to say in an open meeting in a public forum, because this is an agenda item, to stake out my position in this, so it's clear going forward.
Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Any opposed, any abstentions? All right, motion passes. Thank you.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Can we ask that the administration put, post these dates on the website?
Oh, we will do that.
Especially the kindergarten one because people have to be planning.
May I? We're going to be sending out information announcements about the opening of kindergarten registration and we provide that all at the very beginning. We'll have it on our website, we'll try to communicate as much as we possibly can.
I'm just thinking of families who are often planning their vacations and they need to know that their kid's going to have a little more vacation than they are. I mean, the kindergarten ones.
Well, we're hoping that they all come on September 8th.
Right, but it's that ninth or 10th day that, I mean, that September 9th or September 10th that they'll have to have coverage.
Right, they would have to have coverage, that's true. True, because their child may not be in school on one of those days, they won't be in school.
Significant portion of September 8th too, the visit is pretty quick.
The visit is quick, yes. But I will add, of course, it doesn't necessarily work completely, but the after-school program, students that are in those programs are still eligible to be in those programs beginning on the 8th.
And just one further note, I mean, you should still continue to develop the calendar and when you're ready, hopefully in the next couple of months, to come back with, back to us with a draft calendar.
What we have done in past years is usually in January, and we've moved it up this year because there's been some question about it, is to do basically this in January, probably nothing more than that. And then later in, in early May, come back with the other days, which are, you know, the, the early release for the middle and the high school as well as conferences to the extent that we can put them in. Because we're going to have to give some more thought to that next year. So anything that we currently have in the calendar is all sort of brought back at that time. And to Mr. Schlickman's point, there, you know, anything that we would have as a other proposal, should we have something, would, would be taking place during these next few months before that calendar came.
I appreciate that we got this done now. Going forward, I don't think this is early. I think actually even going to November or earlier, even having these dates a year ahead would be nice. Not, it doesn't have to be the whole calendar, but it's just the start date, the end dates, the vacations are all helpful for families who have longer-term plans than.
We can, we can definitely do that, we could add it to the list for even in October because I think we'll know certainly by then what, what's going to happen with those issues.
All right, next up is Professional Development Day, Dr. McNeil.
So I'd like to wish everyone a happy holidays.
Thank you.
Everyone watching. The millions of viewers. Okay, so I'm here to present on our, actually as part of our district goal, to increase the cultural literacy of all district staff. And this is one action that we have done annually for the past three years, is to have all-day, a professional development day for all staff in November that is dedicated to cultural literacy. And this year, the theme was equity and inclusion. I do want to make one note is that in the district goal, I did err in putting in ten hours of professional development, and it should be, it should read eight, because after this particular day, the building administrators will follow up with more professional development at their individual buildings. So I just want to state that. So on November first, our professional development day today, I mean, this year took place on November first. And in this particular presentation, I will be able to give like a description of the day, share information about staff feedback, and identify themes from the open responses that came from that survey that I sent out to staff that I do every year in order, in order to understand how to, you know, continue to improve their experience and make sure that it's relevant to their practice, and give next steps regarding training for this year. And that includes the building administrators planning additional professional development throughout the year. So this, and this is based upon previous feedback. So this day, this particular, this year, we actually started planning last spring. And I put out an email to all staff inviting any staff member that wanted to participate in the planning, to be a part of a professional development day planning team. So we began to meet once a month to discuss and review the feedback that we got the previous year in order to understand how to make this a much more enjoyable, engaging, and relevant experience for all staff. So part of those, part of the things that was highlighted in that survey was that staff wanted to have more choice. They wanted to have time to work together in a building team or in their grade-level teams. And so we tried to provide that type of flexibility. And another important component was to also center on what's going on here in Arlington and provide various pieces of data to, to, for staff to reflect upon as they go throughout the day. And so I think that we were able to accomplish those three things this year. And part of that was also inviting staff members who had various things that they wanted to share and teach to their fellow colleagues in a workshop format. Invite those individuals to submit a proposal of things that they would like to facilitate. And I think that that went very well, and that we got a lot of positive feedback as it related to that. So we had a combination of outside speakers, speakers from the community, and also district staff. So our keynote speaker was Dr. Liza Tullussen. And she was, is, has also, is known to the community because she has had parent forums at Thompson and Brackett that went very well. I actually attended both of those forums that she had last year. And, and part of the focus of those discussions was talking about with parents how to enter into a conversation about race. And I think she did that very well, and I thought that she would be, and the professional development team felt that she would be a great selection because she always, she already had that connection with the community. And I will highlight that Allison Elmer was on the professional development team as well, so she's welcome to chime in on any, or make any comments. So the keynote speaker was Dr. Liza Tullussen. And then in the afternoon, staff went back to their buildings and they participated in professional development led by, either by their building administrator or an outside facilitator or someone from the district. So part of this presentation is including the feedback that we, that, that staff provided. So we had three hundred and seventeen staff respond to the survey. This PowerPoint, you know, gives like some of those highlights of the feedback that we received. And however, collecting the feedback, I wasn't able to parse out the individual feedback for regarding the specific morning workshops. I can do it, but it's going to take a lot more time because they're, the way that the data is presented is very intricate. So it's, it's going to take a little bit more time in order to parse that out. And then we're going to use the feedback that we got this year to plan next year's district-wide professional development day. So this is just giving some statistics of who responded to the survey. Most of the individuals responding to the survey were content area teachers, and most of them were elementary. And we also wanted to see based upon the people who responded to the survey, how long they've worked in the district. And we see that the majority of the people who responded to the survey had worked in a, have worked in the district zero to five years. Just based, based upon the demographics of our teaching force or our instructional staff and our professional, our professional staff, we're predominantly a white district, so two hundred and eighty-five respondents were white. And we also surveyed to see what the, how people identified gender-wise. So most of the individuals, again, this is, this is a result of, you know, the demographics of our professional staff in the district. So two hundred and seventy-two respondents were female. So this slide shows the, how people felt about the effectiveness of the message that Dr. Tullussen provided in the morning. And we have overwhelming positive response where we had nineteen point eight percent agree and seventy-five point eight percent of the respondents strongly agreed. So these next slides, as you can tell, the, the blue is strongly agree and the red is agree. The orange is disagree and the green is strongly disagree. But staff responded to various prompts, just to give an example. The session, and this is regarding the individual morning workshops that staff attended. So this is like the overall perspective from staff of their, of their experience of participating in the morning workshops. So one of the prompts is I learned something new, I felt, I feel inspired to make a change as a result of this session. So all very positive, and that was pretty much the theme. As they responded to other prompts, the speaker gave an engaging presentation. The materials and the slides presented were useful. So as you can see, oops, I'm sorry, you know, as we flip through these slides, that really pretty much give an overall perspective of how staff felt about their morning workshop experience is all very positive. And then getting into the afternoon session, we had over seventy percent of the staff felt that it was productive and met the goals of our, met the theme of the day, which was to focus on equity and inclusion. And then these are, and then we also had an open response, so I provided staff an opportunity to give additional comments. And these are some of the themes that came out from those comments. Some of the staff, and I didn't put this in here, but some of the positive comments were like staff who had been here for some time. They said that this is the best professional development day they've participated in in their like ten-year or six-year experience here in the district. So that was very, it was very, I was very happy to hear that. So some of the things that, you know, were also positive, that it was a great day, provided choice with a good mix of local and outside expertise. The keynote speaker was excellent, it was an excellent menu of workshops. We had over thirty-one, like I said before. And, and there's, these are some of the things that we need to think about. Like, we had a mix of two-hour and one-hour morning workshops, and so, you know, I was surprised actually to hear this and very kind of happy to hear this, that staff wanted the workshops to be longer in order to get past the theoretical point that the speakers were making and get into really some of the strategies and practices they felt like they needed to, you know, have the workshop go a little bit longer so they can dive into those strategies and practices. Time for lunch needed to be increased, which I do agree. We tried to pack a lot of things into the day and, you know, just trying to do that. We definitely need to give staff time. And I think not just to eat lunch, but to debrief about their morning experience and meet with one another in a very relaxed setting. So I, I definitely take that, and it was definitely very valid. And also to provide, and I think that if we provide more time for lunch, that will take care of the next bullet, which will give staff time to debrief about their morning and talk with their colleagues about their experience and, and start to contemplate like, how can I take this knowledge that I acquired in the morning and, you know, incorporate it into my practice? So I just want to acknowledge that this was a team effort. I definitely want to acknowledge, it always starts at the top with, you know, Dr. Bodie was very supportive and it's, you know, gave us the, the space and the agency in order to go about this and plan this work, this, this day. And so it definitely could not have happened without her. And these, and then I, just a list of individuals that, you know, food service, the director of food service and the food service staff. We had bus drivers and the director of transportation. So I just want to just make sure that I put this in the, in the presentation that, you know, the high school custodians, all the building principals, all the building administrative assistants, I'm sorry. You know, I just want to highlight those individuals who just, it just would not have happened without them. And it was truly a collaborative effort. You know, the deputy director of information technology, we had high school teachers. We also had a student voices video where we captured some of the experiences from the students that we presented in the morning that got very positive feedback. And the high school teachers, John Di Tomaso and David Moore were a big, you know, help with, you know, producing that. David Ardito, the director of visual arts, he also helped with that. The high school assistant principal, Bill McCarthy, helped with the rooms and getting all the technology in place. We even had like our students, Braden Quinlan and Grace Walters, who was an intern to help produce the student voices video. And Braden helped on the day of the professional development with the, you know, technology. And then also our professional development committee, which was representative, these individuals took time, they were not paid. They came, they took time, they volunteered their time to come after school and have me participate in meetings and then do various tasks to help support the day in their own personal time. And then also the ACMI youth coordinator, Kevin Wetmore, and all the staff who actually presented, who presented. And I have a list. We have Hannah Dingman, Thad Dingman, Dr. Janger from the high school, Sarah Marie Jettie, Pam Watts-Flavin, who was the director of children's services at the Robbins Library, Heather Smith, Jessica Nye, Sarah Byrd, Jeannie Wall, and Rebecca Wall, Christine Capalto, Erin Heineman, and Graham Daly, Margaret Cretto-Thomas, John Masuk, Kristen Di Francisco, and James, James Paris, Brian Buck, and Melanie Costandakis, Kate Fracto. And then we had partnerships, and we also had some organizations who we partnered with who also helped with the presentations, Massachusetts Partnerships for Youth, the Ideas, which are initiatives for developing equity and achievement for students, the Metco Inc., and Understanding Our Differences, which is also an organization. So all in all, it was a great day, it was a very positive experience overall for most staff, which I gathered from the feedback. And we're going to continue to work on this particular goal throughout the year and, you know, take that momentum forward and, and take it into next year. So that concludes my presentation, and I open it for questions and comments.
Mr. Hainer?
Thank you very much, it was excellent. The amount of people that participated, what percentage of our total staff was that? Do you know offhand? You said three hundred and seventeen, was that the entire staff?
Who responded to the survey?
Yes.
No, no, it was a little less than half.
And I, I noticed that there were a lot more women responding than men.
Well, because just demographically, we have more women that work in the, in the district.
Do you offhand, would you know the percentage?
Not offhand.
Okay.
I guess we have to look that up.
That's been an issue.
I don't have the exact percentages, but predominantly, I mean, we know, I mean, it's predominantly female.
Far less in the elementary level, am I correct?
Far less male.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Alice Nappi?
Thank you. Two questions. One, it would be helpful to see a list of some of the types of individual, of presentations.
I can, I can give this to Karen and she can provide this for you. And this has a total list of the workshops and the titles and the description of the presenters and, and an agenda in it. So I brought this along so I can make a copy and pass it around.
Yeah, because I know there's a lot of parents concerned about the work that the district is doing on this and that gives us more that we can talk about.
Absolutely.
And then the second thing is, could you flip back to the slide on how many years have you worked in Arlington?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah. So I just wanted to bring this one up because I thought it was very interesting in the setting of just hearing the requests for more instructional coaching and stuff. Looking at the number of teachers who are zero to five years working in Arlington. And I thought it was interesting in two respects. One, I think it kind of shows where there may be some need. I understand some of these teachers may have worked somewhere else first, but from what we're hearing, I think a lot of them are coming in fairly fresh. Second, certainly they're new to Arlington and how we're doing things. Second, I think in terms of recruiting for teachers, I think the fact that we have this, we're developing a robust instructional coaching staff and, and ability to access. And I would think that if I was a new teacher looking for a job, that would make a district look more attractive. If, you know, I can come in and it's like, okay, I've got somebody, you know, if I have any questions. Even if I don't, I have somebody coming in there and, you know, they can help me get to that student who I was worried that I wasn't able to reach. So that's all I wanted to say.
Just to clarify though, this, these are just of the people who responded to the survey.
Right.
So I don't know how that.
Right.
I suspect it's somewhat reflective of, and, and as somebody who does a lot of surveys for their job, you might, like, you, you sort of were like, oh, well, it was like just under fifty percent. That's really quite a good survey response rate for an, you know, something like this. I, I, that's, it, it demonstrates that people were interested and, and, you know, the survey was, you know, created in such a way that they could do it quickly and, and, you know, whenever we get like fifty percent survey response, I actually feel really good about that. I, I don't think it's something you should be cringing about.
Thank you.
Oh, just, it sounds like a great day and that people learned a lot. I would just sort of emphasize what you heard from the feedback of having an opportunity to digest things and talk to each other and, and sort of look if there's places in the future to sort of bring back some of the lessons, to read, you know.
Sure.
Just to create opportunities for, for teachers and staff to sort of engage with each other on these issues.
Absolutely. Yes.
I just want to mention, first of all, Dr. McNeil did a terrific job on the stage. It was really, it was an excellent day. I think everyone felt that they could learn something from it. I think our keynote speaker was particularly impressive. And one of the things that's great is that she's going to be coming back to Arlington for three sessions, one in March, April, and May in the evening for parents. And of course, we'll certainly invite all teachers to go to it as well. But it's a great connection to have with her, and I, and we're even planning some more things for the, the following year. So I want to thank you for all that you did to make it as, as a great a learning day as it has been. And I think the other part of this is that, and when you do professional development, or even when you do, we were talking about literacy earlier, these are not one-off, these are just sustained, constantly providing the professional development, whether it's social, emotional, learning. whether it's social-emotional learning, the work we're doing in literacy or math. You just have to back it all up with PD. But the challenge, of course, is the quality of the PD and then the time for the PD and all of that. So, we do a lot more job embedded PD than we've done even, you know, five years, 10 years ago. And to Dr. Allison Ampy's point about, you know, attraction of coming to Arlington, we really do a lot to support new teachers. Could we do more? Yes. We have a very robust mentor program. So, it was a great day. We'll continue doing the work and build on what we learned from feedback for next year.
Absolutely.
So, one quick question for me. Do we have a theme for next year or when does that get?
Well, we have to convene our professional development committee and then we'll have to, I think I would like to also, one thing that I think the reason why people are responding to the surveys is because they're actually seeing the changes that are being made. So, since the first year I came, you know, I got the feedback and then we incorporated those changes and so, we're continuing to evolve. And so, part of that is also identifying the topics. I would like to continue with the equity and inclusion, but maybe go ahead and like do a little bit more merging with SEL and seeing, like, really getting into the various strategies and things that teachers can do within the classroom. So, like, really get into the instructional part and so. But again, I'm going to send out, you know, a survey and see how we can, you know, do some testing around and. I know, right? That's gonna be something that's gonna add to.
Lot of stress.
The complexity of it is the, you know, just, and just the way that we're going in society is probably gonna be a very stressful election day. So, we have to make sure that we are, we plan around that, so yes.
Great.
Thank you.
Great job.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And I will pass around, I can.
All right, Mr. Mason, you made it in time for your presentation.
He had capital planning before this meeting.
Yeah, sorry.
That went well?
Yeah, it went well, very productive, but we have to, a couple more meetings before we finalize the plan. The next meeting is January 2nd for that. But tonight, I'll report not about the capital planning, but about the financial reports. This is for the financials through November 30th. And so, as usual, we have our general fund report. This report is the funds from the town appropriation, which conclude, you know, monies from the state that is allocated through chapter 70. With this, we're projecting a surplus of $485,000. That doesn't necessarily mean it will be a surplus, but it, there's still, this is what we currently know and there could be some unknown expenses that will hit and as well as some plans that we may try to complete this year. On that report, if, just if you understand, the revised budget column is the current budget with year-to-date expended, with the encumbrances, what we're currently contractually obligated to spend out and then some projected expenses of expenses that we know, which lead to the available budget. That surplus is once again driven by a budget, when we created that budget, by, you know, added district tuition balance mainly. We also have the grant financial, the report. It's called grant accounts on the memo, but it was, we changed it to grant financial report. One thing to note, all things are moving as planned. Through this though, the, we did receive an additional $22,500 from Metco. Metco did receive additional $2 million to support the program's transportation needs. And they allocate it per pupil, so that's what's, we're appropriating that for transportation, for that additional funding. And we also have the revolving fund report included. One thing to note, as when I was preparing today, I did not catch this error, but it's a minor error under the circuit breaker. Under the revised budget, it says 2.3 million and then under the total revenue, it says 2.6 million, which, circuit breaker, how we budget for is the funds that we received this year, last year, we'll spend it this year. And the 2.6 million is what we received, so it was an error that carried over and was not corrected. So, there, if you look into the projected completion, there's an actual credit balance that is not accurate, it should be actually zero because we've encumbered all of the funds to spend what we collected last year. Any questions?
Mr. Heiner?
On the sheet that you gave us, line 81205, student activities, support stipend?
Yes.
Let me begin off by telling you, I'm gonna be just discussing negative numbers, I apologize. But what exactly is the support stipend?
Well, those are for extracurricular activities and clubs at the high school.
So, I, I'm just curious, shouldn't we know ahead of time what the programs are gonna be?
Correct. So, when developing the budget last year, there was a methodology that I used coming in so late. The methodology was based on the actual data that I knew at that moment, which was based on FY '18. So, we allocated the expenditures based on that, the expenses in FY '18 and, but kept it at level funded for those type of budgets.
One of my favorites, snow removal and ice. That's no, not within your, I understand, I realize that that slips and slides. I'm just curious, we have it under one item there. It's custodial snow removal and then later on, contracted snow removal. Doesn't the town do the snow removal or are we required to do our own? I understand the sidewalks for the custodians, I understand that line item there. But I assume the contracted one, are the streets aspect of it or the?
The parking lots.
Is that what that is?
So, the contracted services, we contract the services for parking lots.
We do that independent of the town? We don't, the town doesn't provide that service for us?
No, not at the moment. And, but we also, you know, we bought a new vehicle in the fleet that helps with the plowing. So, currently, three schools are internal. So, facilities and custodial workers are participating in the snow removal.
Thank you. Line 83804, athletic services. Is there a reason that that's showing a negative number?
Once again, it goes back to that budget technique.
Thank you. And?
But I'll comment that, you know, we'll be working, so Jose did really great work working on this report, he's the new school accountant. He's been here for about two months now. And we, he's caught on really fast. We're going to do some adjustments, so you won't see as many negatives in the next report. Because we did do some adjustments, but for some reason, it did not pull over in the period snapshot that we looked at.
Okay. Under instructional materials, textbooks, computer supplies, and computer software, I assume they're gonna fall under the same statement you just made? They're on the, begins with line 85103, instructional materials is showing 155,000 negative and textbooks is showing 236,000.
We are actually spending 32% higher than what we spent last year at this point. So, I'll review that and give some information.
I'm looking at the textbooks. I thought our goal was to go towards electronic books and things of that nature. Is this the workbooks and things of that nature?
No, and that's a very good question. So, in order to make sure that we have equity for all students, we buy class sets. So, the class set stays in the classroom and then you get the electronic version of the textbook so that students can access it at home. But that if there is a student that does not have that type of technology or access to technology at home, they can take one of the classroom books home.
I think that's great. I'd wanna purpose it by making that statement, but, so instead of alleviating the budget, it's.
Well, I think, I think you're also seeing, and I would have to go in and itemize it, but we've also had to update our social studies curriculum based upon the new standards. So, that has been, and also updating our science textbooks at the middle school level.
So, this would also go to the computer supplies and the software? To keep it updated and things of that.
Right, because we have a, we have a process where teachers find online tools that they would like to utilize in their classroom and so, we're always evolving in that particular area.
Sounds great. Last item, 88501, capital equipment furniture. Is that just replacement of old stuff?
Yes, correct. Well, it would be replacement of any item that would be considered a capital item or furniture item.
Right.
So, it necessarily, it may not be replacement of old things, it could be something that's new. I don't know the exact items.
Well, I mean, we budgeted $4,000 and we're looking at a $59,000 expense right now. Something must have been discovered from when we budgeted it to today.
Well, that partially is understanding what we spent in previous years and that's along the line that we, that was spent last year. So, in 2018, it was minimal. And 2019, we spent about $60,000. So, if we are gonna do the same, which I'm not 100% sure yet. That's what that would be. And it's usually for, like, if we purchase, we have more students in the building, so we have to buy new cafeteria cables, that would come out of those lines. So, setting up different classrooms, all of those would be in those expenditure lines.
Thank you.
Ms. Seuss?
One question and one point, question is about professional tech services. So, it looks like reduce the budget, but then now we're spending over. Is there something that happened or is there just more needs than we expected?
Can you tell me the line number, please?
Yes, professional 83101.
That reduction is in the, was a carryover. So, something that was spent in prior year that had the budget overstated in the original appropriation, removing it out. It wouldn't be applicable for this year, so that's why it's removed.
But we've, we're now spending more than budgeted, right?
Well, we have a projected expense expenditures of, so, the logic behind some of the projected expenditures, if the expenses hasn't happened, some of the things are items that I know that occurred, but in addition, looking at prior trends and understanding that in 19, we spent at a certain level.
Right.
So, I'm just making the assumption that we will spend again at that level unless there's a deviation here.
Okay. And then the point is, I realize at some point, it might be nice to see variance numbers, percentages?
Yeah.
Sort of at the end of the year maybe or something to just, because I know you can sort of go down, you look at these big numbers, some are very small, but, but some, small numbers may represent quite a big variance and so, it just might be nice to see that.
Now, would you like to see the variance based on?
A percentage variance, I think, would be helpful.
Based on what's expended against, to date versus where we were last year at this time? I mean, that'd be.
To me, it sort of feels like an end-of-year report, sort of, you know, that would be nice to see, that kind of.
So, right now, just to give you, I look at, when you ask me questions, I have a different report that helps for certain questions in terms of variances from where we were at last year to where we are at this year.
Right, right.
So, if I look at overall, we're 0.16% above what we did last year, which is really low, I would think it'd be along the line of 2%.
Yeah, that's right.
On actuals, but then.
But within categories, they might be very different.
Correct. But I will take that and, I was planning on meeting with the budget subcommittee and hopefully that will, we can discuss different formats of what you'd like to say.
All right. Yeah, so, again, this is more of a formatting of the report thing, but one thing I am still struggling with is the general fund expenditure report relationship with, for example, the grant or actually with the rolling fund report is a better example. So, if we just look at tuition to other schools, which is partially funded by the circuit breaker, when, how do we know our total spending is down or up, right? Do you know that now? I mean, so the $6 million that's in the general fund expenditure report.
For the tuition out of district?
Yes.
You're referring to?
So, would that be 6 million plus the 2 million in the circuit breaker?
Yeah, so, yeah, we separate. So, the general fund report is only the funds from general funds. If you want an all-funds report, that'd be something we can discuss about having that adjusted. So, we can do the, a report with all the funds that are related to.
So, if circuit, if tuition to other schools is down by, say, 1.2 million, which is what it's showing here, you've fully taken the 2.3, the 2.6 million in the circuit breaker, spent that and then all of the savings occurs in the general fund?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, well, because we can only carry over circuit breaker.
Right, right, no, no, that's the way, that's the right way to do that. I just wanted to make sure that that's the way you're doing it.
Correct.
Any other questions? Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, superintendent's report. Oh, sure.
I forgot one thing.
Yep.
I have to give acknowledgement to my, actually, she's brand new in the district, my administrative assistant, Asha Daniels, who worked very hard on helping with the organization. We actually, she identified with the help, with the, working with Denny Conklin, a new tool we could use in order to make the choice possible for staff to sign up for the professional development day. So, I just wanted to, I need, I definitely needed to, it would be remiss if I did not identify her. She gave.
We definitely want to keep her happy.
Right, right, and so, she was exceptional and just coming into the district and took on this task and did a great job, so.
Thank her on behalf of all of us.
Yes.
All right, now the superintendent's report.
I really don't have much tonight, other than, except this is a very large item and that is where we are with the high school project. Last night, the building committee met to make final decisions on the $24.7 million gap between the design development costs and what the budget was. So, just to remind people what the process is, we went through a schematic design and from that schematic design, a budget was developed, which is what we went to the voters with. But what happens during that process is that the design gets more developed, more detailed, and then it goes off to cost estimators again. And when it went off to cost estimators again, they found a gap between our budget and what they're seeing in the market today. What's going on today is that we have a lot more big projects, both public and private. And the bigger the projects are, the, there's an inverse relationship that there are fewer subcontractors that are available to do these more complex. So, it's a market force in terms of competition on these. So, just in the last six months to eight months, we both, the cost estimators for our design team, our CM, our contractor, as well as our OPM, because we've had cost estimators from all three look at this and they did a lot, they did a lot of work to, to align their costs as well and came to a consensus on what the gap was. So, this was a, quite a long process for the committee. I think in the last six weeks, the committee itself met five times, but there were a lot of other meetings that occurred, there are subcommittees of the, of the building committee. So, it was, I think a lot of credit to Mr. Thielman, who ran a great meeting last night because it was, it's a difficult thing. It's a, you're making some very important choices and you delve into the research on these and a lot of discussion, but on most things, we had consensus on the, on the choices. So, there were some hard decisions that had to be made and we don't know yet whether we will have to do some more, some more decision-making as we get to 60% documents and construction documents and we'll get to 90%. It has been the experience of other projects that, yes, that could happen and so, we will, we will deal with it when that comes along. So, none, so, right now, in turn, I'll talk to what was reduced, but the, our architects are going back to prepare the documents they have. architects are going back to prepare the documents they have to submit to MSBA, which will be done sometime mid-January. But it doesn't change our timeline. We are still going to be beginning with the pre-construction, um, right around the February vacation. In fact, we will have a forum to, for the community to talk about all of that in February and we're sort of working on what the date is early February. And then the construction is still going to start. There'll still be more work to be done and construction drawings and going out to bid and all of that, but the, the actual construction is still planned to be started next October. So in terms of some of the big items, you know, the, they range from millions of dollars to a particular item to six thousand dollars. And it was a big, a big array, but one of the things that the committee felt very strongly about is maintaining, uh, our commitment to sustainability, to all electric, to still moving forward on a net zero. And so there's a lot of research and discussion about what effect would happen from reducing the geothermal wells. The committee decided that we are going to have geothermal wells, it's just we're not going to have as many as we had planned. I think originally it was like three thirty, we're down to one thirty-three?
One thirty.
One thirty. But in the analysis of the savings in terms of operating costs, it, it really wasn't a big spread. So we did reduce, but we're maintaining that. Uh, at the, at the moment, we, you know, we put in the footings for the lights on the fields, but we have, and the conduits, but we, the, the poles will have to wait, but we did keep the turf fields in the project at this point. But there were some things that, that, that had to not be in the project and maybe we will vote on an alternate list later on, but such as the Minuteman Bike Way or the, the east stairway, uh, east ramp, uh, which is the ramp between the school and the CBS. So there were, um, those were difficult decisions, decisions about glazing and what kind of brick we're going to use. But the, the thing that's really important for people to know is that, um, it was a very tough process. There was great consensus on the committee and the committee remains committed to the goals of the project, having an excellent facility and we're going to have to stay within budget and it's going to try to reach all of the sustainability goals that we had, um, had talked about when we were presenting this to the community. So, um, I think everybody had a hard time wrestling with these. People spent hours going over spreadsheets and in discussions, but that's where we are. And then we're, I think tomorrow, we're going to work on a press release on this and, um, that's where we are with the project. We're still moving along. And, and the chair of the committee is here and he may want to add something and Dr. Allison Ampe is here, too.
I think, yeah, I think Kathy touched on it. All the committee, um, every member of the committee and, and the adminis, school administration spent hours and hours and hours looking at spreadsheets, looking at the design, making sure we protect the spaces for students. So there was, there were no reductions in common spaces, no redu, then that was a proposal at one point in time. No reductions in common spaces, no reductions in, in the number of classrooms, no reductions in places where, in programmatic spaces. But, um, you know, I think everybody left the meeting last night pretty tired from the process and feeling like this is something we had to do. The, no, the committee, as, as we said at the beginning of the meeting, the committee's job now is to make sure, um, that, uh, the project is aligned with the amount of money the voters allocated for the, for the new school. And that's our job for the rest of this project is to make sure that we are within budget and we're delivering a school that meets the needs of our kids. And there are a lot of different opinions. We welcome the public's opinion, you know, input, but there are a lot of different opinions in the group on which way to go and we took votes and like anything else, the majority votes.
How did the battle of the Bunton burners come out?
Well, they're in there.
Well, they're in there, but we're going to do some more research as to whether we can do it a different way, but we still need a flame.
Yeah.
We just don't need the electric.
We had an impassioned, right, a teacher here, very good teacher, came and gave an impassioned plea for the Bunton burners. So they're in there. But then there were other opinions about the burners by members of the committee from their own experiences in high school.
Dr. Ampe?
I just want to point out for the public, when they look at the list of things and wonder why did we make some of these choices and ask about consensus, I think under, it's important to understand that once certain, um, choices were made, the other choices became inevitable because we couldn't afford, you know, once you, once we made some really big choices, everything else couldn't be done because we just didn't have the money. I mean, we couldn't do that and stay in the project. So there was consensus because we knew we had to meet the budget that we've been set and we were respectful of that. And, but I don't think anyone, there's many choices on there that we made that I don't, you know, in the best possible world, we wouldn't want to have made any of them. But we're, we had the objective of having a quality building and maintaining the educational program and we were able to maintain, we were able to meet those objectives. But I just want people to understand that it wasn't consensus, that we felt like all these things, you know, it was good to get rid of them. It was just, we needed to make budget.
Ms. Mory?
Well, and, and also, am I right in saying that we couldn't have gone to the voters with a larger budget project in the hopes of preventing making these? The way the process works is that you have to go to them with the project you have, with the amount of money that that project is going to cost. So there was no way, you know, to go and to prevent having to go through the process that we're going through right now, is that?
Unless you wanted to double your, triple your contingencies, which would have been hard to get through the MSBA, they probably wouldn't have accepted it.
And even if your budget was coming in under, even if your estimated comeback under what your project budget was, you would still have to go through this. It is a required part of the MSBA process. They're trying to make sure that you're analyzing everything and getting good value for your money, whether you're having to shave your money down or just look at it and go, well, do I really want, you know, do I really need this or is there a better way of doing it and saving our voters money at the end?
We, we have a number of things, a number of seven or eight items, I don't know what is, is alternates right now. We have to take a formal vote on all the alternates at the January meeting. I think we probably should do that. And so then, but that, you know, so the connection of the Minuteman Bike Way, that is an alternate and I believe there's a number of things on that list that we, that we could do at the end of the project should we have the money.
Well, one of the things that's complicated in the decision on alternates is they come into two categories. One, we have to prioritize and the other is where you can go out in a different bidding process. So it's, it's very complicated. But to both of your points, the, the educational functionality of the building was predominant and, um, so when you have to change the type of metal you use on a facing wall or, you know, these are the kinds of decisions could get really quite granular.
And the tile.
And the tile. We, we had seven feet tile in the corridors. We moved it down to five, to five feet after talking to other principals that were in construction projects. Every, every project, big projects out there right now for high schools or even elementary are facing the same thing because it's the, the market in which we're going out right now, which I don't think we, well, I don't think that it's changed so much in the last eight months that we, we couldn't have anticipated this level of change. But, you know, everybody made a, you know, a lot of research went into this to make sure that what we would be choosing would not affect the main goals of the project and certainly would have good warranties and in, make a quality building.
Great.
And the last thing I would say, I, you know, this is the time with our last meeting of two thousand nineteen and I just wanted to wish all the, the community and the parents and our students, um, most joyous holiday season and, uh, and wonderful wishes for next year.
Thank you.
And I think that, you know, from the school department's point of view, we leave this, this calendar year with a lot of gratitude to the community. Uh, we're able to talk about the high school project because of a June override. As you heard the elementary principals tonight, we were able to really, really change some of the important things in the elementary because of the override in June. So we, I, I want to acknowledge that and, and to, to again, say thank you for all the positives that have come to the schools this year.
Great. Thanks. Consent agenda. All items listed are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the committee so requests, in which event the item will be considered in its normal sequence. Approval of warrant, warrant number two zero one one four dated twelve seventeen two thousand nineteen. Total amount, one six five five three zero six dot eight six. Approval of minutes, regular school committee minutes of twelve twelve two thousand nineteen. Approval of trips, Naga Okakyo, also Kyoto, Osaka, Kobe and Nara, Japan, homestay, July fourth, twenty twenty to July fourteenth, twenty twenty. So moves. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? Unanimous. Okay, um, policies, BE, uh, BEDB and KFE.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of BE on second reading.
Second. Is there any discussion?
Just want to read, this is the one that just, just says nineteen meetings.
Yes. All those in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed or abstentions? Unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I move policy BEDB with the amendment that I have presented in Novus, adjusting the language for the fifteen minute rule to include the phrase unless the chair determines that the scheduling of present.
Mr. Thielman?
Um, so the, here are my thoughts on this. I think I'd like the fact that you amended it, Paul, so thanks for doing that. I think the, uh, two-thirds means five people when you have seven, so that's right. Seven times point six seven equals four point nine or four point six nine. So it's, you know, four after six people. So that is, um, you know, high bar to meet.
We're a polite group.
I know, but I have, I have, there was a period, we've had great chairs in recent years and actually most of my time on the school committee, the chair, ever, the chairs have always been reasonable, but there was a period of time where it was a little difficult.
I was not a committee then.
I know, but we missed you.
You're the only one on the committee, you had to.
Yeah, I was.
Remember that.
And I know, I know, so I'm scarred by it. But the, um, so, um, I have to go back to that time because had that rule been in place, there would have been, on this issue, there would have been a lot of games, a lot of games. I can just imagine different things happening during that time. Kathy and I were here. So with this group, this is very reasonable and it basically sends a message that we want our presentation to be short so we have time to talk and the chair has to use his heard discretion, which is a good thing, but there may come a time when new people get elected to the school committee who, um, you know, have an ax to grind or an agenda and then it manifests itself through this rule. And I'm just going to caution everybody on that, that that's what happens.
That's why we have a policies and procedures committee that meets regularly.
Yeah, well, that's right.
Mr. Hayner?
I hear what you're saying, Mr. Thielman, and I would tend to agree, but I also realize that a majority of civilized people can change the rule at a later date if there's a problem.
All right, any further discussion? Ms. Seuss?
Oh, uh, just that, it seems like the problem that would be created is someone asking for more time and the chair sort of being intransigent in that. It just doesn't feel that big of a deal. I mean, persons still get fifteen minutes, there's still quite a lot of time to present material. So I feel like the risk is fairly modest.
I say to my young staff, you haven't lived through a recession yet. When you do, your, your viewpoint of the world might change.
Yes, Dr. Allison Ampe.
I've watched many of the meetings that Mr. Thielman is talking about and I agree that there can be issues or could be issues with the wrong mix of people. And I share his concern, although I appreciate the, the changes that have been made to this. I am a little, I'm wondering about the written reports. Okay, the written reports may be received, that's fine. It's the shall not be read aloud at the meeting that concerns me, um, that what does the chair do? I mean, I know how it happens in town meeting, right? You get stopped. And I, we don't have, we don't run things that way here. And I feel like it's, I don't know. I'm, I'm, again, worried that this is something that could be misused later and be held up by policy and, and.
Mr. Thielman?
Yeah, I, I think that with, in this point, presentations to the committee are done by employees of the district, uh, almost exclusively. So we're giving, we are, as the employer, giving instructions to the staff of the district. So I'm sure they're going to look at this and comply and somebody being aware of our policy and our desires isn't going to come in with ten pages of single spaced text and start reading it to us. I think this more provides direction and expectation than something where the chair is going to come down with the gavel, which might happen, say, in a town meeting setting.
May I respond?
Yes, go ahead.
So I would just point out that the meet, the presentation that we had today by the elementary school principals pretty much fit this description and I'm not knocking it. I thought it was helpful. I think when you're presenting as a group, when you have one person doing your spoke, being your spokesman, it is your spokesperson. It is easier to have something written and so you're not going off message, so you're properly conveying the words of the group. And I like having a copy of it so I can see it. It, I also like seeing PowerPoint so that it can be done different ways, but I'm just, I'm, and I understand town meeting is very different.
While I'm chair, I would interpret this much more narrowly. I would interpret this much more narrowly. So a PowerPoint or a speech is not a written report. Just because it's put in Novus doesn't mean it's a written report.
Okay.
That's how I would interpret it. If there was a written report, if there was, you know, and we've seen some of them sometimes and they were reading the whole thing, that's what I would interrupt somebody. But these types of things that are basically just their speech that's put into a report, that's, that's, that's written down and put into Novus because they gave it to Karen, that I wouldn't consider to be a written report.
Okay.
But that's just me. Another chair might interpret it differently. You're right, there's, there is a risk of that.
Yeah, we have considered those reports when we talk about evaluation materials and stuff. I mean, they, they count as a report out, so.
It's not a, we're not making a presentation, we're doing a legally prescribed, uh, uh, task of the committee in which we're required to state, read only the words that are in the evaluation document in that case. So obviously state law trumps policy and in this case, it's not even a report.
No, I'm, I meant that when we're asking for evaluation material, you know, when, as objectives, we say we want to report on something and a lot of times it can be something that was pretty similar to the elementary school principals thing. I mean, that's the report.
I, I think that, look, nobody who's been a chair, when I've been on the committee, obviously, uh, I was off for five years on a nice little vacation during stormy times, but, uh, I, I've not known a chair who's unreasonable in terms of folks coming before us. What we're trying to do is have people, uh, presenting professionally to us. There are times when you need to read text because it's important, but I, I think best practices would call for visual, uh, and, uh, and more rehearsed presentation for the most part.
Don't disagree with that.
Mr. Hayner?
I'm just concerned, we're, we're worrying about yesterday going forward. I have faith in this committee. I'm a talker, try to limit it and occasionally I'll get a look at, look from the current chair and previous chairs. And occasionally, I'll get a look, look from the current chair and previous chairs and get the message. So I think it's, I think it's worth going, trying it, worth trying it.
Yeah, I mean, I don't anticipate people raising a point of order at the 15-minute mark if the chair didn't notice. Or the same thing, if somebody's reading a presentation, I don't, or somebody came with a terrible PowerPoint, I don't anticipate somebody raising a point of order and challenging that, you know. There may be a future member that does that, and we may need to reconsider it. All right, any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Any abstentions?
I'm going to abstain.
Opposed is no, not aye.
No, no.
No.
Out of respect for those who served with me during that period.
Mr. Chairman, I move file KF-E, fee structure for rental school buildings, for second read and adoption.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? That one's unanimous. Okay. Subcommittee liaison reports and announcements. Budget? Dr. Alston Ampe?
We will be meeting on January 9th at 8:30.
Policies and procedures. Mr. Schickman?
We just adopted the policies.
Great. Curriculum, instruction, assessment, accountability. Ms. Morgan?
We need to meet in the new year to tackle the SOA plan. So who, who needs to be, I have no SOA plan, obviously. So who do, who, can I ask, who do we need, who do we need to kind of corral to get going on that?
Well, I would prefer that you wait a bit because we are tackling it.
Great.
In fact, we've even talked about it and the whole administrative team is on it. So what we were thinking is that we would be working on it probably January, early February. And then, you know, involve, giving you our draft, we'll go through a couple of sessions, bring it to the, you know, your committee, bring it to the school committee. It's due April 1st.
Okay. So let's, we'll, we will meet at some point in the new year to talk about the SOA plan.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think you can meet, just go over that schedule in a little bit more detail.
Sure.
And not have any draft or any framework for the plan, but maybe just go over it because it's a very tight schedule.
It is, it is. We're going to put some more meetings in as a result, not your committee, our.
Community relations. Ms. Seuss?
I need to do a doodle for mid-January, I think.
Facilities. Mr. Hayner?
Only to report that we'll be, I'll be meeting with, I and possibly my other member will be meeting with the PTO with Dallin on January 28th at 7:00 PM.
Great. Legal services, nothing. Building committee, we covered. Calendar committee, anything?
Yes. So we met with the community on, when was that? On the 11th. About 50 people showed up. We, some small group discussions and sort of shifted the process a little bit midstream and then brought out people sort of to larger discussions, larger points people wanted to make. We also received about 100 notes, is that about the right number? From, from parents in the community indicating their thoughts and their preferences. And then the calendar committee met on the 18th to sort of digest all this. And we sort of looked at, all around here was all the, you know, big pieces of paper that people had written on. We discussed the comments we'd received. We only started looking at some of the comments that were written in email. Basically, I think to do this right, we need more time. We also discussed how we could reach out to groups in the community representing religions and cultures that we don't, we didn't, haven't heard from yet, just to hear more about what their concerns were. And the current thinking is that we will come back to the school committee with a recommendation April, something, I mean, spring. It may not be implemented next year. Maybe the recommendation is we wait a year. But, but sort of the idea is we just need more time. We are looking only this year at religious holidays and also hopefully the look of the, that's going to be one meeting, basically, the time of the look of the calendar. Any discussion about when we start has been deferred to next year. So that is not being discussed right now this year. There's not, you know, the spring recommendation will not recommend anything about start time before or after Labor Day. So that's where we are now.
Calendar format?
Format, yeah. Yes, I sort of tried to say that, but I may have said it poorly.
Yeah, so again, just to, my perspective is if we're going to change the start date, we need to give parents a year's notice. So we need to know by September of 2020 if that's what we're going to do. So we can't defer it to start discussing it in September 2020.
May I, the start date is a contractual issue. So we're going to be into the negotiations next year. A contract would not be ratified probably till May, so it would actually be two years out. We would not be looking at a change next year or the following year because of just the whole process of negotiations.
Okay, so that's fine, but you had also said that there are some teachers that are upset about ending on June 28th.
9th.
29th, the following year, it would be June 28th. So there is, if that is the sentiment, there is an opportunity to have a side conversation with the union, make that one change.
Yes.
Doesn't need to be tied to everything else. We're not going to pay them more for starting on Monday instead of Wednesday.
It's not a small discussion.
The law allows impact bargaining on an issue of concern. And it's, I would recommend, because it isn't something that's going to be settled in five minutes or 10 minutes, that if we're going to do this, we should do it as soon as possible. That's all.
I mean, I don't know that we want to do it, but I'm saying, some teachers have told people that they want to do it. Some parents have said they'd be open to it. Some parents are opposed to it. So I, again, it's a big issue, but I don't see just putting it off until the year that it doesn't really matter that much. This is, these are the two painful years. Go ahead, Dr. Alston Ampe.
I was just going to point out that we don't know if the community wants us to do it.
Yes, yes.
And that that's.
It's a contractual issue. And we have a process where we go through negotiations. And there was discussion with the union about what we want to do prior to negotiations. And we have the, we have the second vice president of the AEA here. I wanted to say something along this.
All I can say is that we're happy to discuss this and negotiations next year. We are not interested in reopening the contract before that.
That's the message we got.
All right, there we go.
Okay. Mr. Chairman? One other thing, I just want to point out that in 2021, Rosh Hashanah begins at sundown on Monday, September 6th. So if we are open on Rosh Hashanah, we are having our first day of school on Rosh Hashanah, which I think is, is a terrible message. We did it one year. And to have families having to make the choice between religious observation and going to school on the first day, I think is not the direction I want the district to go in. In 2020, Rosh Hashanah starts on sundown on Friday. So we only have one of the high holidays in the 2020. And in 2023, Rosh Hashanah is, begins on a Friday night. So, you know, the impacts differ across years. But I certainly would not want to be open on September 7th, 2021.
Okay. Election minorization committee, anything new?
Well, we did meet recently and we will do on the 17th to discuss warrant articles to put forward to a meeting. There will be a couple, one potentially on changing the way town meeting members are elected to make it so that people with the most vote get the longer terms. That may or may not be contentious, we'll see. There might be a ranked choice voting on the warrant. And there'll be something to ask to, I've talked to this last time, to extend the time to do this committee and change the, some of the membership and some of the, and the voting requirements and stuff like that.
Great.
Thanks, guys.
Superintendent search process. Mr. Schickman?
We had a meeting at 5:00 this afternoon. Mr. Kuter, the executive director of MASC, came to talk to us. The item of interest that was the focus of our discussion was very specific. Hello, Mr. Mason, I'm about to go and use your name here, so bear in mind that something is going to be thrown at you. I just wanted to give you warning, you were just looking too happy over there. We talked about the type of things that need to be in an RFP and what our desires were. And Mr. Kuter said that the things that you want to put into an RFP are facilitation of focus groups, analysis of feedback, online surveys, develop decision criteria, position descriptions appropriate to the community. And that our timeline to be most advantageous, which is what we're trying to do anyway, is to open the search on Labor Day and close in October. He said that's the best way to get the highest quality candidates. Now, we looked at, previously, we distributed some RFPs from other districts. And Brookline was an example for two reasons. One, the discussion of what they wanted from the search firm was good, in the opinion of Mr. Kuter. However, it had a very negative component as well in terms of the hoops in the RFP. He said the requests for documentation were onerous at the point that nobody wanted to respond to the RFP because it would have taken him four days of work assembling the documentation for all the requirements. So that would provide some information as where, as where to go. That we would like to have a draft RFP by the 13th of January and on a motion by, and a motion approved by the committee. The chair has been asked to draft a message to Michael Mason or his designee telling him what we would like to include in the RFP and get an initial draft RFP so the subcommittee can look at it by January 13th. And that is the report of the superintendent search process committee.
Great. Thank you. Liaison reports or announcements? Liaison reports or announcements? Nope. Future agenda items. So you had asked a bit about, or you, somebody had asked about inclusion, about special education and the budget. And I had asked Dr. Bodie also about the lab inclusion report recommendations and any budget impact. And was hoping to get a report on that before we do the budget in February, so that's still something we can look into. Anything else? All right. Disband legal services subcommittee, we had discussed we don't need that anymore. Mr. Hayner?
I mentioned this to the chair, since I've consistently been saying nothing to report. I don't, and I'm asking the body this, would we prefer the word suspend as opposed to disband? I don't know if it's going to take anything to put it back or whatever.
Yeah, it's not one of our, I think, standing subcommittees.
So it would disappear anyway, so.
Yeah.
I moved to, I moved to disband the legal services subcommittee effective.
Second. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? And is there any executive session? Nothing. Okay. All right, motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Have a nice holiday, everyone.
Happy holidays. Thank you, everyone.